Start us off with a roll call.
Counselor Shalata.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Demus.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
West.
Here.
Dadi.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here, counselors, uh, first entertaining motion to approve the revised agenda you have before you here tonight.
Honorable.
Here. Councilman Shalata.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Seconds, all in favor say aye.
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 First order of business we're going to have is the approval of amendment, city council meeting, January twenty first, two thousand twenty. Council, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, been called, all in favor.
Aye.
Close. It's gonna bring us to the appointment section of our agenda, we have two appointments. Mister President, members of the council, I submit the name of Dan Kennedy, served the first term on the Board of Adjustments.
Counsel will be happy for you.
Mister President? I've, I moved to that appointment.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Roll call please. Counselor Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Lindar.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Thank you Mister President, members of the council. Uh, Mister President, members of the council, I submit the name of Clark Allred, first, first term, served first term on the Joint Powers Combined Communication Board.
Counsel will be happy for you then. Part, ahead.
So moved Mister President.
Second. Second.
Roll call please. Counselor Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Lindar.
Yes.
Halter. Stane. West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Thank you Mister President, members of the council, this is gonna bring us to our presentation and proclamation. Item number one, we have this guy. If, if anyone's had a tough job in the city of Rock Springs from the day-to-day work that Mister Kiggins has done for us animal control with the persecution, of course, I haven't seen billboards strapped to people downtown with your, with your picture on it yet, just fine. But, um, three months shy of thirty years, and, uh, Mike Kiggins, um, is going to retire, um, a much deserved retirement. Had Mike around a, a, a long time and we were discussing stories of some animals that he dealt with, Mike, uh, could, Mike, you wanna come up? Save for retirement, remember we talked about you can say some stuff we could end up in jail over? But Mister Mike Kiggins.
Uh, Mayor and Counselor, it has been a pleasure working for the city of Rock Springs. Um, yes, we've had just about every type of animal you could imagine end up in this town.
Even a kangaroo.
One year we had a kangaroo get loose at the petting zoo out at the fairgrounds and I ended up having to get that at like two in the morning, so. Um, yes, we've had a, a wild time with some of the stuff we've had to catch and it's been a, a real honor and a real pri- uh, privilege to get to serve the citizens of Rock Springs and.
You guys have all social with that guy, the slug that attacks the dog? This is the guy. But Mike, you've done an outstanding job at, uh, we told some stories back in the day of some animals, but you, uh, and I think Chief Pacheco said it well, there wasn't an animal you couldn't catch, well, always were hands-on and, uh, there when you need it. And, uh, contrary to some of the ridicule that animal control has taken, especially, uh, Mike, over the years about our chamber that has occasions, this is not an easy job, not, not a job that, uh, I don't think any community would last very long, let alone thirty years. More animals are our pets, it's very sentimental to have to put animals down, uh, tell you, uh, it would, it would grow on you day in, day out, that ridicule by, uh, some, just think that's some joy. Uh, I, I surely respect what you've done for the city of Rock Springs for thirty years, wish you well on your retirement, take the same, serve well. Um, have a black, like. Maybe. Michael D. Kiggins, Rock Springs Animal Control, Animal Control Supervisor, Animal Control Officer, CPR instructor. May first, nineteen ninety, February third, twenty twenty, in appreciation for dedicated service to the law enforcement. Citizens of Rock Springs, Wyoming, appreciate everything you've done, forward, seen in a while, but, uh, maybe. Applause, I thank you for what he's done. Those are gonna be big shoes to fill, um, should well, relax, enjoy some life, with that, we also have a, um, presentation by Sergeant Matt Register, done some research over our, um, uh, Rock Springs Police Department patch that we've had throughout the years and, uh, maybe patch, gonna turn it over to Sergeant Register, some idea of what he's been doing and what, I don't know.
Awesome, thank you Mayor and Counsel. All right. All right, awesome, I'd like to introduce, uh, Kelly Batisti, she's our career services specialist, and, um, I wanna thank Chief Pacheco and Mayor and Counsel, uh, for this time. Um, I was, uh, it was about this time last week, we had, uh, our annual chief's call and, um, I had the opportunity to present, um, kind of abbreviated version of this, uh, to our officers. Um, and it was something that, um, sparked a lot of interest and, um, kind of threw Kelly and I, uh, down a historical, uh, a lesson of, uh, kind of the, the patch of the Rock Springs Police Department, so. Um, kind of our shared vision that, uh, Kelly and I have with this position is to not only, um, recruit officers, but also that retention. So we are really clued in on, uh, marketing towards that new generation and that new generation with a big sense of being a part of something bigger than they are. Um, so that sparked kind of the conversation about the Rock Springs Police Department patch. So the patch that we wear, uh, today, um, when I came in, um, and Mike, this, uh, when you started at the police department, when ninety, I was seven years old, so I was, I was He-Man and Ninja Turtles and, and, uh, not to make you feel old or anything, but, uh, when I came in two thousand and five, um, it was something that I really didn't pay much attention to, it was just kind of, um, you know, new to law enforcement, new to the job, um, didn't really give it too much thought, but here recently, when we've been putting a lot of purpose and a lot of meaning behind what we're doing at the police department, it kind of sparked that interest of what, what truly is on our shoulder and what does that represent? So I went to the, um, the resident encyclopedia, encyclopedia of Rock Springs and Commander Matt Kessler, who has the forty-three years of experience, and, uh, you know, he's scratching his head and he's like, well, you know, um, I think this and I think that, so he, uh, threw some clues out, um, which led us to kind of start researching. So our research kind of went back to the nineteen forties. In the nineteen forties, um, as far as we could find, was the first time that the Rock Springs Police Department adorned a shoulder patch. The shoulder patch looked like this, pretty simplistic in design, it's a state seal in the center, um, iconic black and white, uh, stitching inside, Y O at the bottom, it's from Wyoming. So then we start looking at generations, the nineteen eighties, who doesn't love these, right? Should we bring it back? Um, then Chief Hawk, um, commissioned for a new patch, and that design came up of the patch that we wear today. So there's a lot of meaning, um, behind this patch, but it was kind of unearthing it and locking it, because through generations, uh, it was, just wasn't passed down and a lot of it was locked. So I asked Chief Pacheco, and, uh, you know, we're trying to decide for exactly what it was. Reached out to former officers of the police department, um, some gave us some, some clues, um, probably the closest clue that we had was, uh, gateway to Yellowstone. Um, Yellowstone, you know, being a natural, uh, first national park, natural treasure, uh, got us to, uh, thinking, you know, what's, what exactly is in that center of that patch? Well, we know that the eagle on top, symbol of freedom. The Sharif's wheat on either side is, has biblical ties to abundance and fertility. The serve and protect moniker down at the bottom, very, of law enforcement, serve and protect.
So this is gonna be a good one, not to interrupt you, but, uh, the director of travel and tours, not to put it on the spot, but, can you see what's next? Look at this patch, I didn't realize this, as he, as Sergeant Register was going through this, was it, uh, see that? That says it all, everybody should know what that is, right?
So it's, it's the center, it's the whole, right? So, uh, you know, as you look, and there's only so much that you can transfer into stitching, artwork, so I, I understand. Um, but that left a burning desire, what exactly is it?
There, there it is, blown up.
So we're like, we're, we're playing off the gateway to Yellowstone. So, wait. And what's going on with it?
This is why we're so grateful for graphics design.
Right? Right. So, you know, we did as much research as we could and I was about to like just call it, you know, you know, Google could only take us so far, right? Um, so as kind of a Hail Mary, I stepped over to the historical, uh, museum and I told the curator over there what we were, uh, trying to do and she's like, you know what? I think that's the city seal, and I'm like, we have a city seal, she's like, yeah, it's around here somewhere, so we're looking all over the museum, and above the, uh, elevator at the time, there was this seal.
There it is.
Right?
Now, can you go back one slide?
Sure. So when I laid eyes on it, I was like, that is it, I found it, but what does it mean? So, you know, she dug through the files and, uh, we found out the artist. Long, long, and what we found through the records was this was commissioned in the eighties, city of Rock Springs, gateway to vacation. We were, uh, uh, Officer Ken Lorimer was so close with it, he's the one that gave us the clue of gateway to Yellowstone. As far as we can tell, those are the Tetons, and that is Flaming Gorge, that's not.
Right at the base of the Tetons is Flaming Gorge.
And it's not geographically correct, so what we learned was, um, at the time, it was that the gateway to Vacation Land was a market. Like, add north, one ninety point Yellowstone, you went south, you were at the Flaming Gorge, boating, all like this. And then there were some things that tied, like, wine, livestock industry, and then of course you've got the incorporated in eighty-eight, and, uh, can you brush, and all like the state flower of Wyoming. So I'm like, all right, I get it, I feel whole now, all right, I've been wearing this on my, my sleeve for the last fifteen years. Um, but that was in the sixties, and that was relevant in the sixties, so, uh, with Kelly and I, we started looking at marketing and how do we overcome this epidemic in, in law enforcement of hiring and retention? So we set out, flash forward, twenty twenty, we set out to bring the agency together, to bring the community together, and to symbolize what a patch is. And your patch that law enforcement wears is a symbol of your community. What better to sum up, um, is the natural resource industry, so, had, uh, reached out, uh, spoke with the, uh, the officers and the employees of the police department and kind of, you know, what, what's Rock Springs known for, and it was abundant. Uh, oil field, so we went ahead and went with that, but we incorporated a bunch of hidden meanings into it. So we had four basic designs, put it down on the box, everyone voted for it, and the one that came with over sixty percent of the votes was this patch here. Patch has a lot of hidden meaning in it, and you just look at it, uh, you're like, oh yeah, I can see, I can see what it is. But when we look at marketing to those, uh, younger generations, it goes like we're adding depth and meaning to what we're doing at the police department. With banner, Rock Springs, that was the sign, iconic, uh, home, uh, Rock Springs pool, right here in downtown. Y O, the nod back to our first patch that we donned, uh, with the Y O. Eighteen eighty-eight is the year that the city of Rock Springs officially incorporated. Mine, that, cross legend pick, is symbolic of the natural resource industry, those hard work and other ones in Rock Springs. Fifty-six, can you guess? Nationalities host of all. Uh, the minor light. But overall shape, the modern design of the shield, which is iconic of what a badge is, shield. The color scheme of oil, that is not only a nod to the, uh, gateway to Vacation Line, uh, Vacation Land design, but it is also, um, during the eighteen hundreds, the late eighteen hundreds. The Union Pacific Coal Company, for oil, out. Now the minor light. It is strategically posi- uh, positioned on the patch as we wear it on our left-hand side. As we wear it on our left, that minor light shines forward, or that light shining forward. And the meaning behind it that we, we came up with and that we, we feel that really ties, um, not only police department to the community. It's the light shining forward, uh, symbolizes progression and our dedication to improving self, our, our community, and our. So with that, um, this was not one person's idea, this was not one person's, um, quest, was not Kelly's quest, was not my quest, it was a total team effort with the department. And, um, I found this quote, uh, as we're working on these projects and collaborating, um, really resonated with me, that that coming together is the beginning, but keeping together is progress and working together is success, so. So with that, um, that is a new patch design, I believe that, um, Kelly handed those out to you, so you actually, um, see it and feel it and, and check it out. With that, Kelly has a few words to kind of, uh, build on, Kelly?
Hello. Mayor, everybody, so the only thing that I wanna add to this is that Sergeant Register spoke about, one of the things that we're looking to do is to fill our numbers, so not only are we trying to find officers today and right now, we're marketing to the future, so to the end of the millennials, but more importantly to the Gen Z or I Gen, whatever you wanna call them, the kids that are up and coming. So we're looking to market not only now, but five years from now and ten years from now, it's a national trend that we don't have police officers. So we're trying to make ourselves appealing farther down the line, we don't want kids to come in and go, well, I just wanna be a police officer, we want them to say, I wanna be a Rock Springs police officer. And so part of that generation is looking for meaning and culture, so we're giving them that symbolism and that we're creating that, um, legacy for them. And so you'll probably be seeing different things like this come up, but it's important to know that this just wasn't an art project, it was thought out, it was calculated, and we're gonna continue to do that because we're trying to put Rock Springs on the map with this. We don't wanna be in this situation in the future, and so we're gonna keep researching and moving forward, so thank you.
Any questions, comments, counsel? Well, I'd like to just give your team a round of applause, I think that's very interesting, uh, never know where, where we're going, where, where we've been, it looks like where we've been. I always was confused with that patch, great job. Counsel, you'll be expected to have this tone, left, shoulder, for your counsel. With the light shining forward, right, Matt? Thanks for coming and giving us, uh, a presentation on that, that's, uh, makes sense to me, forward. Much clearer and, uh, I can always remember seeing little dots down there, I didn't know they were sheep and, uh, cows, sheep were great. But, uh, it's good. Next on our presentation, we have the, uh, Urban Renewal Agency, two thousand nineteen.
Mayor, Counsel, um, as it's making its way around to you, uh, just wanna thank you for allowing us to present before you. Um, also with me is Sue Lozier from our boards, who serves as the secretary of the board, Kevin Harper, who is a trustee of the board, and, uh, Trina Britton, who's obviously in our office. So, uh, I'll just go over some of the highlights of the annual report and you can obviously review more of it when you have the free time. By the numbers, so in twenty nineteen, uh, total downtown and private investment was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, that was spread out over twenty-six different buildings, uh, that were renovated or, uh, in, re- redeveloped over in twenty nineteen. Um, twenty-nine and a half net full-time new jobs were created in downtown Rock Springs, volunteers spent three thousand, seven hundred, seventy-seven and a quarter hours. Um, it's, volunteers are critical to what we do from, from our board, to every event we manage, to coming up with new concepts, to, uh, everything, staffing all of, a lot of the projects that we do, so those hours, uh, don't go unnoticed. Uh, this year in Bunning Hall, we hosted ninety events, uh, public and private events with attendance nearing eleven thousand, that was a twenty-five, just about a twenty-five percent increase over last year. Uh, the Broadway Theater saw a similar increase, a thirty percent increase, a hundred and ten events there with attendance topping eleven thousand, uh, just at those two venues, so those venues, um, both relatively new, obviously, twenty fifteen is when Bunning Hall was renovated. Uh, twenty thirteen, I believe, for the Broadway Theater, so in the, you know, those have grown to be real community assets and draw a lot of people to downtown. Um, and then we have a hundred and twenty-two members in twenty nineteen of our Friends of the Broadway program. And what's further in there, uh, but it's not on the cover, is eleven new businesses opened downtown, in downtown Rock Springs in twenty nineteen. Those include Chelsea Blau Photography, Cowboy Crepes and Cafe, Fits of Laughter Daycare, In Motion Physical Therapy, Jen Hargrove Photography, Pinnacle Solutions, Randall's Holistic, Roadhouse Three Oh Seven, The Stellar Cellar, Toy Town, and You Went to Bank, so those are all the new businesses that we welcomed into downtown last year. Um, eleven of them, uh, serving, you know, all kinds of different resources here in Rock Springs. Of course, the biggest news, as you all know, is the Wyoming Business Council approval of the First Security Bank grant, which is tremendous and was certainly not just a downtown effort, but a real team effort on every bit of the cities, from Mattson Paul's Department, to legal department, the mayor's office, uh, everybody really pitched in and, and put that grant together and our trips to Cheyenne, so, uh, we're excited about where that's going in the future and, and looking forward to the redevelopment of that building. Um, I'll highlight a few of the other things, uh, we introduced for the first time in twenty nineteen, our Plaid Friday event, which is, uh, dovetails with Small Business Saturday, which I think you guys are all familiar with, but kind of a kickoff, uh, to Christmas shopping downtown. Tremendous turnout for that, uh, the picture you see there is people waiting at First Bank to kind of start that day off. Um, April Thompson, right there in the front, and the, I think she was first in line, I, they were lined up over an hour before they even opened that morning to, to kind of start off the day. Uh, we also launched in, um, twenty nineteen, our quarterly merchant meeting, so we do a lot of one-on-one meetings with merchants where we're walking the streets and we're visiting and we're in those businesses all the time, we have a closed Facebook group, we have a private email group that we communicate with those. But it, it's really valuable to get them together, all together, so quarterly we do that, we invite them all to come together, we present topics of interest that they would like to hear about, and it also gives them a chance to commiserate with others and talk about what they have, that maybe they don't get that chance to bounce off of each other as much as they could. So we were excited about those, those continue, we just had our la- our first one for twenty twenty, um, two week, well, I guess last week. Uh, we are always also looking for ways to raise funds for our program, so we hosted our first ever Taco Fest, sold twenty, over twenty-two hundred tacos, raised four thousand dollars. Um, it was a huge event, if you weren't there, uh, I was really worried when we started it, that we would be there with all these tacos and not a soul was gonna, going to show up. Um, and there was a line out the door to get in, so it was a really successful event, and it also, uh, kind of dovetailed with one of our transformation strategies, which is dining and entertainment, so just kind of reinforcing that, uh, downtown is a great place to go for dining opportunities. Uh, we also created with the Community Fine Arts Center last year, the first ever Rock Springs Arts Week. Uh, that was not restricted to just downtown, what we did is gathered everything that was happening from an artistic standpoint in a ten-day period in Rock Springs, so it included things at the college, at White Mountain Library, the Community Fine Arts Center, the Rock Springs Historical Museum, the theater. Uh, we got a tremendous amount of P R for Rock Springs, it was covered by, uh, the Casper Star Tribune, Wyoming Public Media, and so it's always good, I think, when we can raise our flag to the top of the pole and talk about the great things going on in Rock Springs, we're not often seen as an arts destination, and so I think that's important for the rest of the, the state to know that we have public art here, we have a great thriving art scene. And so that's how that, where that came about. We also launched our Twenty on Twenty campaign, which was kind of a spin-off of Small Business Saturday, we do a tremendous, tremendous amount of publicity for Small Business Saturday, but we wanted to kind of keep that momentum, so we encourage on the twentieth of each month, people to come downtown, spend twenty dollars, maybe it's buying a gift card, maybe it's taking somebody to lunch, having wine at Sidekicks, whatever it may be, just spend twenty dollars on the twentieth of each month to help support local, your local businesses. Uh, after, uh, it was a very long process, but the dining deck ordinance that you all finally approved, Bitter Creek launched the first dining deck downtown, was really successful, we're looking forward to that in twenty twenty as well. Um, the front corner here, which also took a long time and was, uh, with a lot of help from Paul's Department, the Eagle Scout Project that put that gazebo up, uh, finally concluded this, sort of concluded this fall, um, we'll add planters and, and some different things around that in the spring when the, when the weather permits. Uh, Dominion Energy, those volunteer hours, Dominion is, is really a great community partner with us, and they restored the historic caboose, which was, the paint was really fading, needed a lot of work, but that's such a great organization, they, they provide the funding to do that, and then their group of volunteers, their group of employees spends days down here doing all the projects in addition, so not only did they repaint it, but they rewelded all of the skirting around the edges, they built stairs for all four entrances, they secured up all the windows, so it's a great, uh, great team building, or team partnership with them. Thanks to Councilman Halter and Paul Kausic, of course, the, uh, electronic vehicle charging station was it, uh, installed in the fall as well, and we're seeing people weekly using that, and so it'll be interesting to see as we start tracking that in the summer when we have more of our tourists, how many are in there, but every week there's a couple, a couple folks using that, so, and you see them, then they wander, you know, into the various stores and restaurants, there's some that we've seen with their bikes, and so they take bike rides around the community while their vehicles are charging. Um, I mentioned to you already the eleven businesses, and then, uh, we did receive seven grants in twenty nineteen, a grant from Dominion Energy, which I mentioned, Rocky Mountain Power Foundation, the Sweetwater Bosse's. Uh, Sweetwater Bosse's, and I, I kind of go, talk about this a little bit in the grant, but it's really critical, they provide a stipend for an intern for us at the Broadway Theater, as you all know, we're, it's a very small staff, it's myself, Trina and Terry, part-time, so to operate those hundred and ten events at the Broadway. So to operate those 110 events at the Broadway Theater takes a lot of effort. And so they help fund a, an intern for us who helps us coordinate a lot of those activities and events. A grant from the Sweetwater Travel and Tourism Board, the Wyoming Arts Council, the Wyoming Community Foundation, and Wyoming Cultural Trust Fund. And then just a few other things, Smithsonian Magazine named Rock Springs one of the top, one of the 15 best small towns to visit in 2019. It's a great article, they talk about all kinds of exciting things going on here. And I did link that for you, it's a huge link, but it's an interesting article if you haven't had a chance to read it. Rock Springs was also named one of three pilot communities for the Wyoming Arts Alliance Project. We just began that, started in 2020. We received that recognition in November, but it's now sort of gearing up. We swept the 2019 Main Street Awards for Wyoming, winning the Innovation Award, the Display Award, and Leadership Award. And we were also named one of two pilot communities for the Made on Main Program, which is a Wyoming Main Street and National Main Street community program, and that will also start in 2020. And so those are some of the highlights. If, as you read through that, if you have any questions, by all means, holler at us and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have and keep you in the loop as things go forward.
Counsel, questions, comments? Well, you guys do a great job, and I'm looking forward to the spring construction of the First Security Bank. And I'll eventually, I'll come down. And you know, one of the key items Chad mentioned to discuss securing the bank grant with Slipboard was track record with the past grant projects that we've seen. The progress may be positive out there. Great job, keep up good, good work. And Sue, Kevin, Trina, all you guys do for us.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chad. Okay, item number four on our presentation is the Sweetwater Travel and Tourism Office, this 2019.
Good evening, is this on, can you hear me? Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, I'm Janessa Meredith. I'm the Executive Director of Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism. Trying to bring everyone through the gateway to vacation land, that's my plan. So you all have this annual report in your red bags that I left for you earlier. So I'll just go through it briefly, it's our 2019 annual report. As you know, Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism is the Local Option Lodging Tax Board. We administer the 4% Local Option Lodging Tax. There's 11 board members on the Lodging Tax Board. Six of them are from Rock Springs. Mark Lyon is our vice chair, he's here with us tonight, he does a great job. Now, we have two from Green River, one from Superior, one from Wamsetter, and one is appointed by the county commissioners to administer the 4% Local Option Lodging Tax. That goes before the voters every four years. So we've increased it to the maximum of 4%, most recently in 2018. You can see the budget breakdown there in the report as well. State statute mandates that the Local Option Lodging Tax has to be spent on marketing and promotional purposes. It can't be spent to build attractions or anything physical. It has to be spent on marketing and promotion. So you can see there, the budget, 72% of it is spent on our overall marketing campaign. 10% is event grants, 5% we fund the chambers to operate as visitor centers. 5% goes to the Sweetwater Events Complex in a marketing block grant, and then 8% for administration. And the Lodging Tax Collection, you can see the chart, how it's been collected over the past several years. As I said, we increased from 2% to 3% in 2014, and then again increased to 4% in 2018. So you can see right now, we're collecting just over $1 million at that 4% rate. The block grants that we administer to the Chambers of Commerce and the Events Complex, both Chambers of Commerce operate as visitor centers, like I mentioned. So we help them with their staffing and operational costs. They distribute brochures around the area for us as well. Then the Sweetwater Events Complex, we help them with their out-of-county marketing as well. So the event grant, 10% of our budget is spent on event grants in Sweetwater County. So literally any event that's hosted by a nonprofit entity that generates hotel occupancy qualifies for lodging tax dollars. So anything from the fair to rodeos, to kids' sporting events, conferences, conventions, so on and so, so on and so forth, the lodging taxes helped fund those events in the last couple of years. We also focus on event recruitment to the area. We've recruited a number of the state high school sporting events to the area. We just submitted a bid to host state girls and boys 4A and 3A soccer in 2022 and 23. That would be huge if we're able to secure that. I think we have a good shot, we got turned down the last two applications, so I feel like we're in a good position for that. We also recruit international travelers to the area, whether they're traveling on tour buses or independently traveling. We work with International Roundup every year to talk to the travel agents around the country and around the world to bring visitors to Sweetwater County. I serve on a number of committees and boards, anything that works to enhance tourism in our area, I try to take an initiative. I serve on the Wyoming Travel Industry Coalition Board. That's all the Lodging Tax Board Directors in the state and industry partners. Event recruitment, like I mentioned, I host a Lodging Association meeting with all of the hotels every month. The Rock Springs Beautification Committee, that was recently formed, Green River Beautification Committee, and then the Flaming Gorge Promotions Committee. As you know, we've done a lot in the way of beautification in the last few years. I originally created the Beautification Committees in 2015 because not only is it important for residents to feel a sense of pride when they arrive into the gateways of our cities, but it's really, really critical for our visitors to have a positive first impression when they enter Rock Springs or Green River. So we've worked really hard to enhance those gateways in both communities over the past about five years. The Reach Awards, I created the Reach Awards in 2008. In the month of May, nationally, tourism is recognized and promoted. Basically, what's the economic impact of tourism around the country? And so in 2008, I thought to myself, tourism doesn't generate anything for anybody if we, if we don't have really incredible frontline staff providing great customer service to visitors around the world and around the country. So I created the Reach Awards, it stands for Rare and Exceptional Achievements in Customer Service and Hospitality. So we recognize those folks quarterly at this point. So bring together all of the frontline employees in the industry and recognize what they're doing in customer service. We also do a lot to promote the National High School Finals Rodeo. This was our second year partnering with KUTV 2 News out of Salt Lake City. They do a live remote segments of the event. It goes live on the television on Channel 2, and then it also goes on their website as well. So a lot of coverage for that rodeo. Another board project that we, that Chad mentioned earlier, we helped fund some radio advertising for the Broadway Theater as well. Many of you knew that 2019 was considered and designated by the Governor of the Year of the Woman, the Wyoming Woman. It was the 150th anniversary of Wyoming Women's Suffrage. So women in Wyoming were given the right to vote 50 years before any other woman in the country was given that same, that same right with the 19th Amendment. So I created the Proud Wyoming Woman Retreat. I actually created it in 2018 to do a test run and make sure that I was including everything I needed to, but we, we had an event in 2019 in September called the Proud Wyoming Woman Retreat as well. And it included fly fishing, Dutch oven cooking, a downtown Rock Springs art sip and stroll, some clay shooting out at Let It Fly Hunt Club. We had a lot of important people involved, so really, really proud of that. We had a lot of national coverage for that as well. Originally, the New York Times picked it up as part of the overall story about Wyoming Women's Suffrage, and we were part of that article. And then the Smithsonian Magazine, actually the Rock Springs town, the small town to visit article about Rock Springs stemmed from the work that we did with the Wyoming Office of Tourism and their promotion of the Women's Suffrage anniversary. So it was kind of a group effort on that, but really, really great coverage for Rock Springs. I'm going to attempt to show you the video, we'll see how this goes. Right? I wanted to create a retreat that reflected the pride that originated during the time of women's suffrage in 1869 that lives on today. Although many of us proudly fit the stereotype of a woman of Wyoming, being able to change a tire, catch a fish, ride a horse, hunt big game, and tell stories around a campfire, we are also able to dress up, show up, and get things done, and that makes me very proud. So yeah, we were really proud of that event. We hosted about 120 women from around the state and region, actually. We had people from Utah, Arizona, Idaho, and come from around the state for that. So it was really a great opportunity to showcase what we're doing in Sweetwater County, what women are doing in Sweetwater County, and really honor that anniversary. So I'm really proud of how that turned out. Like I said, the bulk of the budget has to be spent on a marketing campaign. So 72% of the budget is spent on a traditional marketing campaign. You can see some of the statistics in there on page eight. In 2019, we fulfilled almost 27,000 travel guide requests. That's this piece you have in your bag as well. We just reprinted this last October, so it's brand new. And of course, the restaurant listing is outdated as soon as, as soon as it comes off the printer. But everything else should be current. A lot of itineraries, a fold-out map in the center of Flaming Gorge. It really turned out to be a beautiful piece, as usual. So glance through that if you have a chance. We also have an e-newsletter. I don't know if y'all are on the list, but if you aren't, we can get you on there. Every month, we deploy an e-newsletter about what's going on in the area, events that are happening, seasonal attractions, and we have over 60,000 people that receive that every single month. So a really huge database that gets information about Sweetwater County real regularly. These are some of our ads on page nine there. Lots of, most of the time, locals do not see our advertising. We're targeting outside of the area to generate visitation to the area. So I always like to share what we're doing, lots, a lot of our creative development, digital banners, some of our billboards, and so on. I'm going to show another video, let's cross our fingers.
In southwest Wyoming, there's a path to adventure waiting to be explored. Experience our dynamic art scene, charming downtown events, and trendy hotspots in Rock Springs. Visit Green River to explore pristine Wyoming landscapes you can't find anywhere else. Put some dirt on your boots and hike to breathtaking vistas. Or discover one of our favorite ways to cool off in the summertime. Jump out of the car and into adventure at Lake Flaming Gorge, where it's not just about getting here, it's about getting out, making once-in-a-lifetime memories with the ones you love, and savoring the great outdoors. Don't just vacation, explore in Rock Springs and Green River, Wyoming.
So that is our two-minute piece, that's actually live on our website. We have a number of 15-second, 30-second segments featuring the dining opportunities in Sweetwater County, historical opportunities, mountain biking. There's a lot of different short how-to videos on there as well. So check out our website at tourwyoming.com to see all of the videos, but that's our largest two-minute video. So every year, we want to measure the effectiveness of our advertising and make sure that we're spending our money in an effective way that generates travel spending in Sweetwater County. So we commissioned a conversion study. After all of our advertising has been placed, after the summer season has happened, we commissioned a conversion study. And we find out, out of the 27,000 people that requested our travel guide, how many of those people actually came to our area. So you can see there on page 10, our advertising, the blue boxes are, there you go, the blue boxes are the research findings of what Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism did. This is, this is the economic impact of the research that we conducted within Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism. We commissioned SMARI, Strategic Marketing and Research Incorporated, to do this research for us. And we know that our advertising dollars generated almost 4,000 trips to the area. The average travel party size is 2.8 people, and they spent an average of 3.4 days in Sweetwater County. And those trips each were about $1,368 worth of spending. So just the advertising placed by Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism generated $5.4 million in visitor spending in Sweetwater County. So they literally take our database, take a random sample of it, of 500 people out of the 27,000, and send them an email and survey them on, did you come to the area, what did you do, what did you spend money on, all of those things. So these are the numbers that we can really stand on, that we know that we've generated. And then the Wyoming Office of Tourism does a much broader level travel impact, impact study. This is, it comes from the Dean Runyon Report, is what it's called. So the overall travel spending in Sweetwater County, this is from 2018, they don't have the 19 ones yet, but, so overall travel spending in Sweetwater County generated $162 million in 2018. So they, they estimate that over 16, or no, over 617,000 people visited Sweetwater County in 2018. That supports almost 1,500 jobs in the hospitality industry. And local residents save $502 per household on the taxes that are generated by visitor spending in the area. So a lot of great statistics on there. And if you want more details on that, you can see that on page 11 as well. So that 162 million breaks down to almost a half a million dollars a day that visitors are coming to Sweetwater County and spending here in the, in the local businesses. So that's really, really impactful. I wanted to share with you a few of the projects that we're working on for 2020. We are looking to create a Flaming Gorge tour, and I'm hoping to have it launched by this summer. Flaming Gorge is our greatest and most dependable tourism asset as far as dependable roads, those types of things. It's a lot easier to take people on a paved highway than it is to take them into the desert to see some of our attractions. So really want to get that off the ground this summer. It's something that we're going to start doing probably two days a week throughout the summer months, have a step-on tour guide on a bus, a La Bus 55-passenger motor coach that we'll be hiring to do that for us in the summertime. That is one of our goals. We are also working on a project called Destination Next. This is a way for us to kind of survey all of our local partners to find out what we're doing right, what our opportunities are, what our challenges are, things like that. So be looking for an email from me in the next few weeks. It probably is 20 or 30 questions within the survey, but I really think it'll be really advantageous for us to make our strategic plan going forward, looking at all of the input from all of our partners in the area. We also are creating a local social campaign. A lot of entities have really focused on changing the culture of what residents say about the area. And so we're hashtagging it, #LifeIsSweetWater. So that will launch in March as well. Just really wanting to promote why it's great to live here and why it's obviously great to visit here as well. And then this project is really large. It's called the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. So it's a customer service training program. I have been approached by local- So it's a customer service training program. I have been approached by local industry on how do we recruit workforce to the area? When they come to the area, if they don't have a good experience at the hotels, if their coworkers or their would-be coworkers aren't speaking positively about the area, how do they handle some of those challenges? So what we're doing is we're hiring this firm to come in and do a Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. It's a customer service program, so mainly, we're gonna be hitting the frontline staff, the, the hotels, the restaurants, the retail. But we're also going to be including government employees, anybody who deals with a new resident to the area or a potential resident to the area, realtors, anybody who has a touch point with a potential resident or a visitor to our area. We want everyone to be speaking from the same voice of what is great about this area. So this is a really, really intense program. It's a nine-month build. So they're going to be surveying all of us. We're gonna be holding some focus groups and then actually conducting the training in September. So once a person goes through four hours of training, they will be certified a tourism ambassador for Sweetwater County. So really, really excited about that. It's gonna be a big, a big deal once we can get it rolled out. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions.
That's, that's all.
I tried to talk really fast.
I was just looking, do you have enough chairs for, uh, boards or? Getting a lot of fighting. We had a discussion a while ago, I'm thinking about individuals that you hire to business. Business can but they not even have lived here long because about question. This is their their first meeting. Person really hates the place. Can't believe, I mean, these are, these are the things that you don't want them to say, but business owners, dressing hotel, hotels, like that, like that, that part's critical. Know more about about the good, everybody has a bad day. Don't fake bad experiences, those individuals have come not the, uh, to, uh, company card and vault.
That's the goal.
Great project. Wayfinding and the like, get here, signs are up. Where they can go. And any, get back to the Wyoming women, any woman that can catch a fish. Done. So, great job.
Thank you.
Counselors, any? Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank Marc. You didn't want to say a few words? That was it, huh? Now, the other thing they have is they have swag. We don't have any for our reception. Science, still some swag. Okay, next item on our agenda is the petition section. Ask anyone who wants to, uh, has any issue to discuss with the city council, this is your time to come up. Microphone, take your record. Let us know what you're up to shoot that microphone.
Check. Got some notes here. My name's David DeGoyette. I moved here to Sweetwater County from the Seattle area about a year ago. It's been a interesting cultural adjustment. A big thing that's, I've been kinda harping on lately is the rec center. There's a significant amount of waste happening at this facility. And I'm a little nervous for a city council meeting ever. There's a lot of waste happening. The kids are using the showers as a water park. Uh, we're losing, it's just cha-ching, 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 right? I'm sitting there watching. They're unsupervised in the, uh, in the, in the, in the locker room. Now, out in the main part where the pool is and everything, it'd be unthinkable for the kids to be out there without lifeguards, unsupervised, making sure they're not dying. But for some reason, in the locker room that has a hot tub and has a sauna, it's perfectly okay for them to run around and rip doors off the lockers and jump in the hot tub and just basically make it uncomfortable for anybody else to enjoy it. And it's been, it's been frustrating. It's been real frustrating. It's been frustrating trying to talk about it. I've been threatened to find myself in a shallow grave in the desert for even mentioning it. That's not an exaggeration.
That was not me, but.
No, no. Mayor Cuomo, Mayor Cuomo over here, honorable mayor, he's, uh, he was receptive when I talked about it. But I, I feel like because of some other things, I needed to come here and talk to you guys. Sitting in the hot tub one evening, some gentleman came in and they had a small child with him and, and their kids started turning the showers in the water park. And I said, he doesn't have to turn them all on, does he? And both those guys stood up and they wanted to kill me for even saying anything. I grew up in a Navy town, surrounded by Bloods and Crips during the crack and meth epidemic, fighting to live just to go to school. And I'm sick of violence. I've been trying to find a place to live in my life where that doesn't happen often. Thankfully, it doesn't happen often. It shouldn't be happening in a public facility. When I go up to the desk and ask for help in a public facility, it shouldn't just be shrugged off as, what she say, oil and coal culture, right? There needs to be a reporting process for that. When I call the police because of it, because it was so serious, and the police dismiss it, tell the, uh, tell the, uh, employee after I leave not to pull a video so we can identify who these gentlemen are, because making threats like this is unacceptable in a public facility. When I leave, they tell this gentleman, "Don't bother." Which was his words, Larry was his name, guy works at the rec center. "Don't bother pulling the video, just let it go." That doesn't make me feel real good. Then I, it was up to me to track down who these two individuals were, call the police again, try to get somebody to add those names to whatever report, so at least we know who they were. So if they made good on their threats, we'd at least have a place to start. The fact that I went up there and asked for help, and they're like, "Yeah, what do you want us to do about it?" That is really disheartening. There needs to be a process, right? When someone comes up and says, "Hey, I've just been threatened with physical violence down in the XYZ," wherever it is in here, that should immediately start a ball-rolling or a reporting process where it's documented and has oversight, and it goes to whoever is ultimately responsible. Make sure those things are concluded and followed up on. That's not happening. It's not just not happening with me, right? I'm not special. Six-foot-three, forty-year-old man, everybody's like, "Wow, you could fight." Should I really have to fight down there? In there? Should I really feel like, well, if I go upstairs, they're just gonna shrug their shoulders and look at me like I'm some kind of sissy for not wanting to be in a fistfight in the locker, right? Should I accept that the culture exists, that you can't report these things because nobody cares? Because that's what out on the, on the boards people say, "Don't even bother. Nothing's gonna happen. Nobody cares here." Right? I'm looking at all that, and I'm like, huh, man, these guys actually might be right, because what I'm experiencing is, isn't, isn't, uh, isn't what should be happening.
Well, Damon, just gonna stop right there because that is people do care. Came to see me, I immediately contacted the director of recreation, had a discussion with him. I heard you're running to a gentleman the sauna, contacted Checo, had him pull the reports, just to see what's going on. There is, there is a process. And I don't know if you've ever had any follow-up on that or why you're here at a council meeting?
I came, I came here to, sorry to interrupt you there, but I came here today because of what happened the other day. Sitting in the hot tub. Now, I don't like the jets on. It's petty. I don't like the jets. They kick up chlorine. It gives me a headache. I can't stand it, right? They're off, it's fine. I'm not telling anybody you can't get in the hot tub. Just when you ask me if I want the jets on and I say no, why do you want to fight, right? It's nothing to fight about. So I'm sitting in the hot tub, minding my own business. Guy wants to, guy's upset that I don't want the jets on. He wants to fight about it.
So this is in, this is a news
A new thing. The fellow, he wants to fight. And I'm saying, you know, this is unacceptable behavior. And he's telling me how he's gonna kick my ass. And in my mind, I'm thinking, boy, I've eaten. But this isn't acceptable. We can't be doing this here. So I go upstairs and I say, "Hey, Rob." Well, I go out and I, and I see Robin, actually. I'm like, "Hey, there's this thing happening." She's like, by reporting it, I felt like I was being looked at as being the problem, right? I went upstairs, I asked her if, uh, if I could talk to her, and that's when, um, you know, because I don't really like being, you know, having derogatory things said to me, you know, alluding to my sexual orientation. You know, it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable having a guy saying, you know, "I'm gonna kick your ass right here," right? That's not acceptable, right? You can't have that. So I go up there and I sit with her. Well, I felt gaslighted. I felt like, she was like, you know, you sure do cause a lot of problems. Hey, I'm not the one threatening to beat people up. I'm the one coming up and going, hey, this is happening, right? And by me coming up and say, "Hey, this is happening," somehow that makes me the bad guy, right? I'm not the one, I'm not down there beating someone's head into the concrete. I'm up here trying to have a peaceful resolution to it. When she told me, "Well, that's just oil and coal culture," that's a dismissal of the entire thing. That has completely just belittled everything I just came up and said. And what's the point? I may as well just beat that dude's face in the wall and gone to jail for it, right? Because if I can't come up here and say, "Hey, in this public facility that I have a right to be, that I have a right to be safe, that I have a problem," right? If I don't have that right, if I don't have that ability, then the only other option is to be like, "All right, well, I'm just gonna be like back in the hood," right? When the only way to survive was, the only way to survive. That's not what I want. So there needs to be a kick in the pants. The culture has to change, right? There has to be, just like what she's saying with the, with the hotel people. You can't be like, "Yeah, this place sucks. We gotta go." How do you expect to have any kind of retention of, 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 of good people in a community when they just want to get the heck out of here because this is their experience? I mean, right now, I'm dreaming about Missoula, right? I'm like, why the heck would I want to put roots down in a place like this? You know? And it's really unfortunate because there's a lot of opportunity here, right? But just the fact that going up and going, "Hey, this thing's happened," and the, and the response I've gotten is, is enough to make me go, "Well, you know, I'll see y'all later." Let's fix it. Let's fix it, right? Say, running away from it, just walk into it, let's fix it, let's make it better. Let's make it so that people don't have the opinion that if they go up to the, uh, to the counter and say, "Hey, this problem's happening," that people are just gonna shrug their shoulder and go, "Well, what do you want me to do about it?" Let's fix that. Let's make it so that the person at the counter at the hotel doesn't have to be trained not to say, "You don't want to be here. I'm trying to figure out how to get out of here as fast as I can." But is just naturally not gonna say that, right? Rather than having to emphasize, "Hey, keep your mouth shut about that. Keep that on the dump." Let's change the culture so that people want to be here. Right? It's easy. I mean, strategically located area, right? It's a straight shot up one ninety-one to Yellowstone. It's a straight shot down one ninety-one to hit Flaming Gorge. Why hasn't anybody stuck a ski lodge up there on White Mountain? How come there's not a Six Flags and an amphitheater at the, at the bottom bringing in world-class acts? Why isn't that happening? How come people aren't going up to Jackson and, and pulling out the wallets of those guys that live up there and actually make them do something for a change that's useful for the state, rather than just parking their tax-free up there, right? This is a, there's an airport right here, we're within a commuter flight distance of most of the surrounding states. There's your tax dollars. Get grants from the federal government, Trump's in office, get EPA waivers. Make that happen. But just staying at this public facility, this gotta be, it's gotta be come at right away, especially with the kids, right? You got kids in there, eight years old, hanging out in the, in the sauna. Grown men, they don't know. You ask them, "Hey, kid, where's your parents?" "I don't know. They dropped me off." Right? It's just a matter of time. So I gotta get on top of that. Anyway, that's it. I'm just gonna beat a dead horse if I keep talking.
Any comments, questions? Questions?
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you what occurred when they seen me is, um, there, there was an old culture at the rec center that, um, you know, I think several have been there a long time, right in the middle of, uh, one individual retiring, start to survive or what I had done at that time. And there is a process to take address it with your staff. In his case, a police officer. So I called Checo in. Robin Rasmussen had just, just started her job. So what I had asked Dave to do was, uh, going to talk to Mr. Lamb, saying, "Robin," but to give Robin a chance, correct the issue. The next day, I go back to the facility. Please sit down with Robin and have a talk with her, find out what
That's right, yeah.
And you did
We did do that, yes.
And what you're saying, that, there was another incident that happened after that, but basically what you're saying, Robin
Same response. The same response, basically.
Supposedly said, "Well, it's an oil and coal culture."
Yeah. I mean, I'm down there being basically being a guy's trying to get me to swing on him, you know?
And then in that case, the, the Checo, oh, you researched that report. Sign and on the report that sorry, sound. So talked. Because that is not
I feel like that's kind of gone stale, but for me, you know, I feel like if I was eighteen and a hundred-and-ten pounds, it would have been a different response, you know? Right? I feel like people would have taken that more seriously, but because I'm six-three, three-fifty, and I feel like people would have taken that more seriously, but because I'm six-three, three-fifty and. I used to be able to lift engine blocks out of cars, people think, well, you should be able to just deal with it on your own. That's not, that's not how the world should work, maybe that's how it works right now, but that's not how it should work. Right? I shouldn't be expected to, you know, have to turn someone into a gut pile down there just to get some justice. I should be able to go and have same access to processes everybody else does. And I feel like right now, I'm like, well. You know, the next guy to, 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 uh, to, to corner me in and think he's gonna intimidate me, maybe he's gonna find out that. That was a dumb idea, right now, I just, all I want is peace, right? I just wanna sit in the hot tub like everyone else and rest my ink and pack, that's what I want, right?
I'm wondering, are you finding out this is the same individuals?
No, this was a, this was just a, just a random dude, right? And you're always, you know, I'm a crazy magnet, I mean, they'll cross the street for me, I don't know why. So, but the, the thing is, the thing that, that I'm most bothered at isn't the fact that sometimes things happen. Right? And sometimes you can't resolve it peacefully right there and you gotta go and get a mediator. That's not what bothers, what bothers me is when I went and did, what is the right thing to do, the response I got. How dismissive law enforcement was, how dismissive staff was in this public facility, right? Or it's me going up and saying, hey, I need help. What do you want us to do? Oil and coal culture. Okay, right?
I appreciate the mention, uh, I'll dig into this with our department. And we don't expect, right, go through that, the, by all means, I don't know, there's always two sides to every story. Wouldn't imagine supervisors that would put over, uh, in that facility is, has a very track.
I like Robin, I like Rob, I like talking with her, I find her to be receptive, I feel like I'm being listened to when I talk to her. But there's a lot on this one individual's plate, right? You can't put the, the, the change of an entire culture. Of a massive facility on the shoulders of one person, that's why I'm here, because I recognized after last time, I was like. This is gonna need a little bit more hump.
Councilman Shalata?
Usually, usually around, uh, between nine and noon, depending on how I'm, yeah, yeah. And then sometimes I'll, uh, um, I, I, I try to sometime, depending on my back, sometimes my back is, won't let me out of the house later, I gotta. L-five S-one rupture back there, it sucks, anyway, but, but sometimes, uh, I try to avoid being there when, uh. Yeah, but there's, it's just, it's just, it's just infuriating every time and, you know, I'm not the only one. There, there's a, there's a. I'm pretty, I'm pretty good at shaking trees, I guess, wherever I go, I'll give you a case in point. There's a, uh, I'll spend significant couple hours, I can just sit in the hot tub for a, a long time. And there's a particular lifeguard who, uh, uh, made the, uh, assertion to me that he checks it every fifteen minutes. And as, when he told me that, I was, I didn't call him out for being a liar, but I have in the entire, in the year I've been coming there. Almost mostly every other day, mostly, I've seen him do a check once, one time. Telling me he's coming in every fifteen minutes and, uh. So it's possible what people are saying is happening and what's actually happening are not the same thing.
Dave, have you been to the city?
I have, I don't like those, uh, stairs leading down, they, uh, they're steep, there's nothing to hold on to and my sadic nerve could any time and that'd be the end of me. So.
We have a ramp, have you been, have any issues with the city?
No, I just quit going because I didn't like the stairs.
Do you swim?
Um, I do swim sometimes, yeah, uh, mostly it's just, uh. The only, only time during the day where I'm pain free is if, or close to pain free is sitting in like, like the hot tub, right? And I don't fit in a tub at home, so I'll give you, for instance, uh, right now it feels like someone standing behind me twisting a knife in my back and grinding it in. Right? That's how it feels, this is basically how I live and so going and getting in the hot tub, it's like, okay. If I'm in here, I'm not in pain and it's nice to be, you know, be able to do that and, uh, you know, and so. You encounter crazy people in the world, yeah.
Got a process.
I would love that, I would love that and, uh. I'd love to see the, what I estimate being at least ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year going down the drain every year.
Well, I believe that's what the process was last.
Yeah, it's just, just some crazy dude and I went out looking for up because he's about to swing on me in there because I didn't want the jets on and I wasn't. I don't approach people like, hey, yeah, yeah, do that, wax up, you, do you want the jets on? No, actually I prefer them off, immediately irate. It doesn't make sense, some people are crazy, you know?
Yeah, I would have to agree with, uh, Council Shalata, been here a long. We will.
Okay, I appreciate it, alright.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Uh, still under petition. Okay, I closed the petition section on your officers and staff reports, um. Still have a lot of work to do, but we have the animal control annual report for two thousand nineteen, council, I would entertain a motion. To approve the officers and staff reports placed on file. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye. Just gonna bring us to the council committee and board reports, we have the item number one, joint powers combined communication board meeting minutes. December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. And two, the joint powers fiber optics teleportation board meeting, that's December seventh, thousand.
Yeah, I'll make it quick, consider, but, uh, board accounting commissioners had a meeting today, I attended in regards to distribution amounts for the. Sixth cent tax, wanted to bring you all up to speed on that. Might recall our request was forty-two million, four hundred and ten thousand, they have reduced that to twenty-nine million even. This is at, at eighty billion mark, happy to share the other amounts, like, sure, some, see the article on it, but essentially that's what we're facing.
So we're, we're looking at, uh, from our original forty-two, a kind of about thirteen, four-ten. Councillors, we either have some work to do or we have no work.
Yeah, I would just.
I just say it, I, now we. The divvy up, but we hold our own. This is, uh, this is, uh, and, and by all means, I surely support, uh, uh. Respect the commissioners for, for at least moving through and making sense of some, um, here, but, uh. We're looking at, uh, a couple of things that are left on the table, we don't know how, um, this, the, uh, projects that are sponsored. We'll, we'll be listed on the agenda, right, or the ballot, we're still waiting to see how that goes, whether. Uh, sponsorships will be standalone, infrastructure will be the same, but, um, we're, we're looking at basically. Thirteen million dollar cut, which is most likely one of our sponsor, um, project. At this point, or, uh, the other option is to hold forty-two million, go back and, uh. Have a discussion with the commissioner, so.
I will also share the commissioners did vote on their sponsorship projects today, the amount they approved for themselves was twenty-five million. They went ahead and voted on which projects and amounts, according to the hospital, they. Voted for seven point eight million, the events complex, six, seven million, reliance, three million, Jamestown project, seven, five.
I will add that, um, the commissioners did, did give, um, respect and kudos to the city of Rock Springs for. Making the original cuts of about twenty-eight, realistically from the get-go, bringing a list that was underneath base population. What, uh, should have, um, held our, held our, uh, stance, uh, ever, ever since that. You probably saw this morning, we did have some discussions from Wam Sutter, who was originally asking. Dollars, I didn't think the city of Rock Springs should, should receive the lion's share even though they have the pop. Because they had the opportunity to raise taxes, collect property tax, which, you know, and, um, uh. You know, there's a reason why our list was where it was, because we are the largest. And these infrastructure projects, uh, are not areas that we raise that type of money, that amount of town. And it's time and, and am completed, so we have, we have a decision to make. Um, we, we look for cuts of thirteen billion, four hundred and ten thousand dollars or, or we stand where we are. To cash it out, I believe Council West is going to be some sort of guidelines as we move forward because. Leave their waiting probably for everyone to go back drawing for projects.
Yeah, so I think the next steps is obviously, uh, discussion among the different municipalities. Um, it does take two-thirds of those municipalities to that master resolution, so although they have decided on that, they agree with that. Not vote to approve that resolution, um, at that time, you know, a lot of these municipalities, that's. Uh, so we have to go, they would, they and us included would have to go back and prioritize before they would probably be allowed to figure out how they want to on the ballot. Part there, but.
Councilman Donnie? Absolutely, believe our original cut. So would, uh, would the council like to get together, think about this for a while prior to the mission's next. Cash out and have a little bit of time to have some discussion with, uh, themselves, but. We're basically looking at, um. Going to be either a sponsorship or, or something, don't see.
Probably a sponsorship or two, part, part of it.
Yeah, yeah, cuz. Agreed. So we'll have some discussion, formulate a game and Council West, uh. Okay, with that, I'd, uh, entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports placed on file. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor say aye. You've had some time to take a look at the correspondence, council, I would, uh. Motion to approve all the correspondence placed on file, is there a question?
So move here.
We have a motion, we have a second? Second, all, all in favor say aye. He just couldn't move us to the bills and claims, we have item number one, the bills and claims for February fourth, twenty twenty.
Your honor, I move to approve the bills and claims for February fourth, twenty twenty.
Do we have a motion to approve the bills and claims for February fourth, twenty twenty, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all, all in favor say aye.
I'm staying.
Item number two, salaries for January twenty-second, thousand twenty.
Your honor, I move to approve the salaries for January twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Do we have a motion to approve the salaries for January twenty-second, twenty twenty, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye. Can move us down to the new business items, item number one, request from the mayor's office for permission to provide. Notice of intent to be a party to the proceedings of the ExxonMobil Abarge Carbon Cat project in order to request in fact assistance funding. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor. I move to approve this request.
Do we have a motion to honor this request, we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Item number two is the recommendation from the health insurance committee for plan year twenty twenty premium increase, council, what's your pleasure? Council Tate? I have a motion to approve this request, we have a second?
Second.
Called, all in favor say aye. Item number three, the request from the engineering operations and public services department for permission to bid. A one-ton service truck for the utility bed required of the, council, what's your pleasure?
Honor.
Council Shalata? Have a motion to approve this request, we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Item number four is the request from the Parks and Recreation Department for permission to field a vacant recreation supervisor position in the civic center. Council, what's your pleasure? Shalata? Have a motion to honor this request, we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, item number five, council, we're going to have to have some discussion here and, um. Uh, some guidance board form of.
Your honor, sorry to interrupt you there, need it all in favor.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? This brings aside. Um, request from out of the middle to draft letters to Senator Brasso and Congresswoman Cheney in opposition to federal rate setting. As it relates to surprise medical billing and supporting arbitration in dispute resolution. Had time to take a look at that, basically, what I can tell you is I, I do support this idea. It's a request for us to send a letter, um, in hopes of, um, eliminating, yeah. Uh, surprise medical bills individuals receive when hospital and insurance group, uh, start. Argue over costs associated with. Your area, yeah, so I think it makes good sense, but I think we as a group should either support it or, or not. If we do support it, I will draft a letter, copy, I'll get these sent, so what's your pleasure? Do we have a motion to honor this request, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a second, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, six is the request from Santa Fe Trail Incorporated for liquor catering permit for the Bootleggers Bash. On February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four P M to midnight at the Sweetwater Events Complex, council, pleasure?
Your honor, I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, second?
Second.
Second called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, item seven is the request from Young and. Let the record show. Item seven is the request from Young and Hart Foundation for a malt beverage permit. For the casino fever fundraiser on March seventh, thousand twenty-four thirty P M to eleven. At the Hart Senior Center. Pleasure?
Your honor. I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is gonna move us on to the resolution section of our agenda. We have item number, resolution two, twenty, dash, eleven.
Resolution accepting and approving an A S O reopening requested plan change. Cross Blue Shield of Wyoming to be effective March first, twenty twenty, authorizing. Correcting Timothy Acomo, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming. Execute reopening request document, capital city.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windor.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one-one? Do we have a second? Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor Tate. Windor.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Dadi. Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Merricomo.
Yes. Item number two. Resolution two thousand twenty dash one-two.
A resolution accepting, approving binding application for excess loss insurance. New America Insurance Company authorizing, correct. Timothy Acomo was mayor of the city of Rock Springs by a new binding application document. Capital city.
You almost said it. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twelve.
We do have a motion to approve twenty twenty dash twelve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor Windor.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Merricomo.
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand twenty dash one-three.
A resolution of the city of Rock Springs express, expressing the city to sell a parcel of real property located within corporate land. City of Rock. Barring the city clerk publishing of sale.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Prison. Yeah, actually.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one-three? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor Halter. West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Windor.
Yes.
Merricomo.
Yes. Item number four, resolution two thousand twenty dash one-four.
A resolution accepting, proving national museum, United States Air Force static display loan grant. Loan. S D A zero three five of the United States. Represented by the National. State. City of Rock Springs authorizing, directing Timothy Acomo, Mayor of the city of Rock. Execute said loan. On behalf of the city.
We were actually gonna put those in Roman numerals.
I've been learning.
Councillor, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen.
We do have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one-four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Windor.
Yes.
Halter. Merricomo.
Yes. And item number five, resolution two thousand twenty dash one-five.
A resolution approving a second amendment to the client agreement. El, Elwood Staffing, Staffing Services, the city of Roxbury. Authorizing Timothy Acomo as Mayor of the city of Roxbury. Matthew Elman, attorney, city clerk of the city of Roxbury. Execute said amendment on behalf of the city.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windor.
I move to approve resolution. Five.
We have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one-five. Do we have a second? Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor Dadi. Yes. Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
No.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Merricomo.
Yes. Item number six. Resolution two thousand twenty dash one-six.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding between the board of commissioners of the county of Waukegan, Wyoming, the town of Largeway. The city of Kimber, Wyoming, the town of Diamondville. Town of Calway. Town of Goatville. Board of Commissioners of the county of Sweetwater, Wyoming, the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, the city of Green River, Wyoming. And the town of Ranger, Wyoming, for impact assistance.
Councillor, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Resolution. Six.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash one-six? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Windor.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Merricomo.
Yes. With that, that's gonna move us, move us to the ordinance section of our agenda, which we have two ordinance, both on third reading. Or two thousand twenty dash zero one, third reading.
In ordinance amending the official zoning map, the city of Rock Springs, one tract of land from community business. B two C D, low density residential R one for one tract totally. Ten point eight three two acres located as hereby described in section twenty-seven, resurvey township, ninety, north range, one oh five west. Of the sixth principal meridian, city of Rock Springs, county of Sweetwater, state of Wyoming.
Councillors, third reading. What's your pleasure?
Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Ordinance.
We do have a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero one. Do we have a second? Second's been called. Roll call.
Councillor Savage.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Windor.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Merricomo.
Abstain. Item number two. Ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero two, third reading.
Ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs, one tract of low density residential R one, low density residential R two. Totally six thousand ninety-eight square, located as hereby described in section fifty, township ninety. Range one oh five west of six, home ready, city of Rock Springs, county of Sweetwater, state of Wyoming.
Councillors, third reading, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero two.
We do have a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Councilman Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Windor.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Merricomo.
Yes. With that, council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will adjourn to executive session.